Good morning. And we're going to call the Order of State Board Education for October 21st, 2023 at 9:30 AM at 450 Flunt Boulevard. We call the meeting to order at 9:46 AM. I am Attorney General Boyd Walton and Director of the Chair of this meeting. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the God who has created in America and to the Father who has created us. One nation, united, united in justice.
Okay. Happy May. Thank you for joining us, good citizens, board members, and business and friends. We begin our meeting with public participation. We ask when your name is called, that comes to the front of the mic, states your name for the record, and we do ask that you finish your comments for three minutes. If you go a little bit long, I will start meditating for you to wrap up. All right. Director of the chair, yes, we have last secret check. Director of the chair, good.
Good morning. I'm Attorney General Walton. I'm here to say, yeah, I know you mentioned one of them. May Day, May 4th, we celebrate, I guess, literally the music from the country that goes back to late 19th century in France and other nations, and I guess it's recognition of Robin's lawsuit, going back to Loméon's accident in Harvard in 1986. So whether he belongs to even or not, or migrant, or worker, all work is worth it. And so Dr. King died for, and we went back to Memphis in 1968. And since he's been a fifty red candy, his brother would be red candy, his brother would be November, make it sixteen years. So that's a tragic time. That's very young. Being known, I was two age then, but recommend a magazine that comes out now four times a year. They talk about withdrawal, the most recent ones, and some of that and other issues affecting that, you know, controversial time. So it's worth getting, Barnes Noble's book store. About both things, the New Republic magazine, the edition to talk about the war on books, very good paid article, which I guess you got an anti-war draft in Florida and other states, which I disagree with them. No books should be banned, you could doubt, but it's only six and triggers, child has Tourette syndrome, and heating is where it's both affecting men and women. So it comes out four times a year, and it's worth it for, from those who work in special education. Last month was birthday, and it's recently coming out about the earth awards. They'll be amazed. The team division probably gets right, they get wide group, all is one of the winners, the actor, and Gloria, Tom Walton, I guess, are the team top winners. This morning, currently talking about bonus, the surgery general, and this is Asian American, able to lie, and this is Mr. David Murphy, and this is Mr. Chumati, who's of some Asian background, and they must state was really taken over by the US in 1898. So I just wanted to say that the changes in the task force, addition in this morning, to what they today, income level, and it's going to be a bad match after many teams have got out, you know, no event on their bicentennial, and maybe seventeen of community college, you have three professors that are retired, and one of them is Dr. Angel, and sorry, little class professor, so at their fifth year anniversary of that college, right, sorry, what went on in UConn. So hopefully you made it all, and let's gather together as educators and the mates here out there, they're doing a good job of giving education. So I put out the word for you right there.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Director of the chair. All right. Seeing no other public participation, we do not need a vested session in this meeting. We are, we could probably juggle around on our agenda a little bit because we do have guests here, and you're certainly welcome to stay the whole meeting, but we also want to hear you if you have other things to do today. So at this point, if we can look at item nine on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, is there anyone wishing to remove any items from consent? Anyone wishing to remove an item from consent? Please our approval by our Commissioner and Director of the school.
I don't want to remove one, but I do have a question actually. Just for the commissioner, if I can ask that now.
Um, passable.
Just why are these all one-year extensions? Seems your market is short.
Well, they've been doing the work for the previous years, and the legislation allows like incremental additional extension. And so this is the team has met with the school, and so it's given them that additional time in order to continue the work that they're doing before winding down from the network. Correct? I'm looking at Irene, who is in the room as well. Irene, could you please ring?
And these were also, for the record, these were all sort of kind of bullying reports with really tremendous presentation, great energy, a request into the district to have this additional year to support what they're doing.
That is correct. Good morning. So the school that you have today has been in the network for three years. It were approved by the board in 2020. And again, monitoring the work throughout these years, partnership we develop, we recommend our two-two years, but practice is just one year at a time, and we continue to monitor work and work with those school teams on implementation, designing guidelines in their commissioners' network plan.
Okay. Seeing no desire to remove the item from an attempt, the chair wants to take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Simple.
Okay.
Remove being properly seconded. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? That motion carries. This is what I had my congratulations against. We were able to do it again in committee, but currently to Harcourt Public Schools, Waterbury, three schools under Derby. Congratulations. Again, we welcome you today, just like I see one of our participants with Lippa. We're drawn to happy and continue. Okay, now I'm going to go back to the motion on the item 4A. The conversion of minutes for the April 5th State Board Education meeting. Simple. Third second.
Okay.
Thank you. Move being properly seconded. Are there any edits required in the prior? Seeing none, all of them in favor of approving April 5th minutes?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion carries. And item 4B, the chair wants to take a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19th, special State Board Education meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moving properly seconded. Any corrections required? Seeing none, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion carries. It was a special joy to have the Commissioner bring you up in our special forwarded meeting, the appointment of the Deputy Commissioner. We look forward to Cynthia Son and Mariana joining us soon. I believe that's the Commissioner's, I know when the start date is, but I'm very pleased to do that. We're at a point on, in our, in our year where we are all eagerly awaiting We're at a point on, in our, in our year, where we are all eagerly awaiting the end of session, to see what actions might be taken that will impact our actions in providing equity and education for all our learners. We're also approaching that time of the year, the end of the school year. And with that, that brings a time of transition for our student board members. We're going to say one for, for the June meeting, but we're gonna actually say farewell at this meeting to the one, because next month's meeting will actually be the time when Project Teacher gets to walk across the stage at his high school, and so he will not be with us in the June meeting. So want to take a moment for us to be able to commend and thank Project for his service to the Connecticut State Board of Education. And we are eagerly awaiting your continued leadership as you matriculate at, I hope it's okay, I probably can't. At the, at the University of Pennsylvania in the fall, and our loss of this voice around the table will be beginning for first-year students and the entire school community at University of Pennsylvania. So certainly I commend you. We have forty something to mark your time here, which I'll just take a moment to read. Whereas, thank you, thank you. I don't want to do that. So, but I'm actually going to be asking for our motion on, on this resolution that we are introducing, whereas section ten dash one of the Connecticut General statutes provides for the appointment of two student members to the Connecticut State Board of Education. And whereas government Nellamont appointed Project to Group of New Canons to the State Board of Education for a one-year term commencing July seventh, twenty twenty-two. And whereas during his tenure, the district viewed a serve with distinction and contributed greatly to the board's discussions of education policy issues. Now therefore be resolved, the State Board of Education extends to Project for its appreciation for his commitment to educational excellence and equity in Connecticut public schools, and best wishes for success in future endeavors. I would ask for a motion on this resolution? Semlu?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. And before I ask you for the vote, I would like to open it up, if there are any other board members who'd like to comment on this.
I would like to make a comment about your nomination here that I was listening to, and there were so many things about in that hearing that I didn't even know, that I'm sure the board didn't know, but you are a quite established young man, all the things that you've done. So we wish you the best, and you know, wherever you go, great things are gonna occur. So thank you for the survey.
Alice?
I just wanted to say, I couldn't have picked a better fellow student, I've known you for a long time, it's been great getting to know you, and I wish you all the best at U Penn, and I hope you stay.
Um, can I just move along? As soon as we're not hosting it now.
I know, absolutely, why don't you be joining with the chorus of words spoken, even this morning, we were here talking about the, the connection between education and business, and how they need to intersect, and that's what we're gonna be working on, education reform from that perspective. So I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to the time when I knew him when, because of all the great things that you will be doing, but it's a pleasure having you on the board, and I know it won't be the end of our communication, I have feeling that you have some thoughts and ideas that you'll continue to share with us, but thank you and congratulations.
Please. I'd like to also take a moment to thank everyone here, not only on the board, but the entire staff of the Connecticut Department of Education. It's been honestly one of the most exciting opportunities and experiences that I've ever had, the opportunity of having in my life. Education is something that was really, really important to me, and still is, and to get to see this and be accepted in such a way in the community has been honestly amazing. But I'm not gonna be there next month for yours, but it's been amazing to have a long time you, and I also would want to, as other students in Connecticut.
I'm grateful. So, and I will note also that, that we're certainly tired of Project also, with a, with a note, which I will open and share with everybody in a moment. Let me, let me call over on it, and then we'd love to present it to you. And Project, are you all over ready? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
That message, dear board member and team at the Connecticut Department of Education, I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to work alongside such dedicated individuals who are committed to improving education in our state. Your passion and expertise have left a lasting impact on me, and I will apply the lessons I've learned from each, each of you into the future. Thank you for all that you do, and making this an unforgettable experience with appreciation. Thank you so much. All right. And stay tuned to that conference, we will do our other transition. Okay, so with that, I would again ask for indulgence to move item eleven, item for discussion, because we also have some visitors that we'd like to focus with that one. So is there a motion on item eleven A, the Connecticut Educator Rising Twenty Twenty Three State Competition? She's gonna make her own. Okay.
Court Chair Boy Walton, Vice Chair Benham, and board members. It gives me great pleasure to provide a brief update and share some exciting news about our statewide Grow Your Own program known as Educators Rising. In September twenty twenty, Governor Lomond and the Commissioner launched our statewide Grow Your Own program in New Britain. It has been three years, and much has been accomplished since then, despite our takeoff occurring during the pandemic. I'm pleased to say we are working with fifteen bishops and have four hundred and eighty students enrolled in courses and sewing code. Of the four hundred and eighty students, twenty-one point eight percent are males, and eighty-two point seven percent are students of color. We have nine students graduated last year that are enrolled in educator preparation programs within the state. Every year, we hold a statewide competition which covers many categories. This year, our competition will have March twenty-third, and sponsored by Central Connecticut State University virtually. We have students around the state participating and competing. We had nine first and second place winners in categories such as children's literature, inside our school, and regret writing moment, who will be going to Orlando in June to compete at the national competition during the national competition. We also have seventeen students from New Britain, New Haven, and Water, that will attend this year's national conference next month, who will participate and compete in various activities. So we're in the total delegation of about twenty-six students. While all twenty-six of our students cannot meet yet today, we recognize their achievements, we do that through shaping them and their future aspirations as educators. I'm pleased to welcome Ayah Madni and Iveyas Rodriguez Sanchez. They are joined by their lead teacher and advisor, Mrs. Eileen Marquez, and their parents.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Ayah Madni. Thank you, Dr. Tucker, for introducing me. I'm a senior, and this is my first year being a part of Educators Rising, and the opportunities that has provided me have been endless, and I'm really thankful for all the work that people in the State Department of Education and educating have able, have been able to provide for me, including this shirt to Orlando Flora, that myself and my peers won, I was able to know. I'm the chairman of the New Britain High School Ed Rising Club, and it really has taught me a lot of leadership abilities, as well as truly realizing the connection that education has with all of their peers. So I really wanna thank all of you guys as well for making education so important to my peers and I, and allowing us to go on through competition, Florida, things like that, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Iveyas Rodriguez, sophomore in New Britain High School. And, you know, the one thing that I love about Educators Rising is that you're part of a community, it's not only a club, but it's really this intricate group of people that really wants to make a change in the world, you know. Me personally, I'm very passionate in teaching, and I've been in this program since I was a freshman, luckily because of my teacher, Ms. Marquez. And this, this club has not only presented me with opportunities, but it's, it's changed my life, because I've been, I've been wanting to have the experience of education that I, that everyone deserves for a long time. And I didn't have that until eighth grade, and the Loretto, and then freshman year when I had Ms. Marquez. And truly, I think that Educators Rising just kindled and fired a passion that our students have for teaching. And no other program really does this. We have, I don't know how many courses in New Britain High School, how many is it? Eight courses in New Britain High School. But Educators Rising really gets into the depth of what it means to us, and, and it really has presented me with leadership opportunities. I've been the delegate for the state of Connecticut at the national competition last year, this year I'm a senator, and I'm really grateful to have this level in our school, because it means a lot to me, and I know that it gives me a straight path to what I want to achieve in the future, which is to be a secondary education teacher. So thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I told them they'd be meeting, and I'm at the back seat, but I guess a lot of them will be now. So I just want to say thank you so much for, for having us here today, and also for supporting Educators Rising within our school. I'm a city native, and I'm so grateful to consider myself in New Britain right now. I've been there for seventeen years as a resident and as an educator. The last two years, I served as a teacher leader for Educators Rising, and just when I felt I couldn't love my job anymore, these opportunities presented themselves. And it's just a beautiful opportunity to see just how much talent exists within our community, and just how much passion, as I say, that there is to be the change we wish to see. My students every day embody the qualities that we all, you know, we sit around and anybody that's discussed, or even in classrooms, in college, and discuss that as educators should be, and they already have these skills well, well developed, and they're eager to sharpen them, they're eager to learn. Part of our deal is to be coming to the board of education, so this one fits the bill. Okay, over that. I am one of fifteen teacher leaders in the state, and I'm just really hoping that other districts see the value in adopting a program like this. Like I said, we have eight education courses offered at New Britain High School, of which nine are people in the role in courses. Oh, A, for example, is taking all three this year, so we graduated with nine college credits in education. So we're very proud, very proud of all, all of our students, and their willingness to come and speak about our club, and I did actually get on the news, in our, when we went to the increasing educator diversity, it's gonna close me on last year, which is not an annual thing. So we're just hopeful for, um, growing, growing Connecticut State Department of Education president on a national level as well. Thank you.
And on behalf of the board, Chair, and Commissioner, they have certificates to present both Ayah and Iveyas, while Eric facilitate local, and you can have your pictures taken. Thank you all.
Before you move for the table, though, I, I know that there are, there are comments and questions for you all. This is a special priority of the State Department of Education of this board, to ensure that we have quality educators in every classroom who are committed to our young people, and that commitment to ensuring that we're growing our own, and that that teacher pipeline, including diversity, has been a high priority. And so we have, we tackle that from many, many different ways, but this one is so near to my heart, a Grow Your Own approach, really, really building off of the passions that it's like students that are in our district right now, and I'm excited to see where you are on the go. I hope you noted that there are student board members on, on this board, many local boards have those as well, and I hope to spread the word, to help our opportunities, and for your continued leadership in education, as you're, as you're pursuing your, your high school and then, and then moving on. Questions or comments? Mr. Harris?
I just want to offer my congratulations to you students, to your teacher leader. As a former educator, I am just elated to hear the two of you speak, and so passionately about wanting to become a teacher, and I, I'm just so pleased, and just want to say thank you. Thank you for your commitments.
Thank you. What did you just?
Yeah, it sounds like a really excellent program, and I know the program started in New Britain some years ago, and I understand that one student from New Britain High School is now, who came through the program, is now actually teaching in New Britain High School. And do you know if there are, how many other teachers there are that have come through the program that are actually teaching in this part?
I can actually speak to that part. We actually realized, when the state, teach the least of it, teacher leaders, I should say, and district leaders from New Britain, were invited to Atlanta this, in March, actually. And one of the things we realized was that up until now, there has not been a set or established tracking system. There are so many students who, actually my partner, who you were referencing, she went through our program, and before became at Rising, that's a new addition, and she's my partner now, she teaches two of the courses in our, of our eight, in our pathway. And we don't have, we didn't have, now we do, an established tracking system, and we actually are developing, are working on a partnership with Central, in particular, Central Connecticut State University, which is where most of our students have, because it's located in New Britain. And we actually have fourteen students this year, we mentioned the nine from last year, and fourteen that graduated and join a education program at Central. And we have a nice system where we will ask them for their personal contact information, and actually have already set dates to invite them back to the college campus at various events throughout the year, next year, and going forward. One of my students actually is working at the PARA, one of the nine from last year just got hired as a PARA educator in New Britain High School. So she went from my student some few months ago, to my colleague, which is wonderful.
Thank you. I do want to congratulate you, the students, you know, one of you are graduating, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I live in the Southmore.
And one of the Southmore. I mean, you are a future. I mean, it's, you know, when you think of the teacher shortage, and to see you come before us, it's just, as a former educator, it's a delight, it's just made my morning, quite frankly. And, you know, it's the best profession in the world, and I think you're instructor as well. And I agree with you, we've got to get everything, so this would, this would help greatly with what we're going through at this point, because that is how I became a teacher early in my high school career, and, and somewhere along the line, that dropped off, and it's so nice to see it back, because that's where we're growing our own, and so just in turn, teaching to next. Go anywhere. Just throw that in there.
Thank you. I probably will, to be honest, because I do love the, the atmosphere, specifically wherever, I grew up in New Britain. And I, I agree in the sense that it brings me a lot of happiness too, especially as someone who's chairman of my club. I really see the, like I said, the passion that these students have for teaching. We do a lot of field experience, field trips, so we go help out.
So we go help out, um, elementary schools within our district and sit in the classrooms and really interact with these, um, K through five, uh, grade students. And our students really enjoy experiencing places. And it's only through these, um, college pathway programs that is organized in partnerships that these opportunities are available for students like myself. And I, um, an individual can kind of spark a person's interest in teaching and a program will give him the feedback a little bit more, so, yeah.
Thank you. It would be, it would be great joy for your previous teachers to come back and be their colleagues. I'll tell you that much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here. And please do come to the conference with your certificate.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh, and I'm just sort of talking about Connecticut pride. Uh, it's really what I'm feeling here right now. Just you embody exactly what we're building when we talk about diversifying our educator workforce. And for the board, there's so much under discussion about staffing shortages, and we have those, uh, that's real. Uh, but never ever forget the work that we've done and that we continue to do. And why do you start, uh, since twenty sixteen? And the fact that we've gone from the eight point two percent to eleven point two percent over that time period, we now have, so from four thousand to six thousand that's counted, educators of color. And so I want you to know that. So when we are out there in our spaces and having conversations, we can together celebrate these short-term wins. Uh, you wouldn't be here anymore. And I feel like I should be spilling some more information here, but I couldn't hold you back. Uh, we are investing in Ed Rising. Uh, and so you'll hear some more about that. So much other good things you'll soon get from us. What I've heard from Infoglass, it's about recruitment by the numbers. Uh, and I just have to thank, uh, Dr. Tucker for, this has been something that she's been in as a chief talent officer and has been working on building, uh, this Ed Rising, Educated Rising program and much more. And yet our, our university is connected to the world. So there's a lot happening, and maybe by next month, we'll come to you with all the numbers, uh, the responses to what we're getting, uh, adding educators, uh, based on the resources that's involved in the party. So there's a lot happening, and I just want you to know that. I know Dr. Tucker's been invited. I would say to talk about what we're doing. Uh, so even though the numbers, the increment is moving, uh, we're still leading the pack. We're certainly leading in this area. I just want you to know that. And be proud of the work that the board has done, right, to jumpstart the work and what the department is continuing to do. But thank you very much. You're probably going to get invitations from us to just speak at maybe a press conference or two, uh, to talk about your experiences because I want other students to get excited just by listening to you and the excitement that that brings. So truly appreciate it. Thank you all so much for joining us here today.
I also want to add one more thing. I want to express my congratulations as well. And as between myself, where I, I don't think our school system has this program, it was really inspiring to hear about how education was a focus in your school system and how students had the opportunity to explore their interest in education. Um, and, uh, it's something I'm hopeful that can come to every district in Connecticut and, uh, have the opportunity to give this opportunity to a lot more students as well.
All right. So with that, please come forward. Do you want me to take one on your phone as well? Oh, yes, I do.
Do you want me to take one on your phone as well?
Oh, yes, I do. Are we good in all of them?
Uh, Shawna, could you please join us?
Ready, one, two, three. The smile's gone. Ready, one, two, three.
And I think Shawna, did you watch your?
I just sent it to you. Okay. We do, this will be on our New Britain Ed Rising Instagram page. Of course, we're posting it in our Instagram.
Be sure to share.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I tried to do something around on your sentence. In fact, we are back now at the, um, uh, six, the report commissioner.
Thank you, thank you very much. So I've been so good morning. Uh, chair and vice chair and all the board members, and I'm saying happy May. Uh, this month, we have several noteworthy, uh, recommendations. May is National Mental Health Awareness Month. May twenty-sixth is declared by Governor Lamont as Get Outside and Play for Children's Mental Health Day. We just sent that information out. The goal of this day is to promote and educate children and families on the benefits of outdoor activities on children's mental health and wellness. Also in Connecticut, DOT celebrates National Bike Month this May, and they have a plan today, actually Bike Wash engrolls a school day, uh, today, you know, with nearly twenty schools across Connecticut. It promotes physical activity, healthy habits, while also reducing traffic congestion around our schools. And DOT established, uh, a space route to school programming in two thousand and five, and they'll be invited to an upcoming board meeting so they can share more information with you. And importantly, yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day. Uh, and May eighteenth is Teacher Appreciation Week. And for those watching, I just really want, on behalf of the department, uh, certainly on, on the board, I'm sure, we're grateful for all our educators who make a positive impact, uh, on the lives of our students every day. And their dedication and hard work, certainly truly appreciated. And we're working as we can to add to those ranks every single day. Uh, our agency will again launch at the end of the school year, our school staff appreciation digital backpack of this home program. We did that last year, and we'll be doing that again. So we're now working with businesses to add to the backpack and will be, that will be available for educators, school staff. So it's school staff across the summer months. If you have businesses or ideas for businesses, uh, that you would like to tap so they can be added to the backpack, please reach out to Eric as we're doing that right now. So you have my report now that highlights just a few key topics as we transition to agency, before we transition to our agency update. As our board chair mentioned, under staff and my appreciation to the board for the special board meeting last month and the appointment of Deputy Commissioner Cynthia Sonnen-Moyano. And we eagerly await of joining the team in seventh workday, but who's counted? Really excited, really excited about that. Also wanted to bring your attention to the modernizing certification regulations. We're in the process of establishing a stakeholder group, which will be the Connecticut Educators Certification Council, similar to the one we did for teacher evaluation. Uh, working on and begin to work in, uh, modernizing our teacher certification regulations. So we speak for the board, and hopefully you can see in your email board chair that you've gotten information from us there as well. Uh, also, uh, on our internal operations, last month, we had an off-staff meeting, uh, which was virtual, but it was great to get all our agency staff together. Uh, for a meeting, just to introduce them to new members, uh, for, uh, Team C F D E. And we are the highest three floors in this building, and our colleagues on the fifth floor sponsored an in-person meet and greet that was well attended. People came in, uh, and there's a lot of good food there. Food is fun. You'll see a picture when I do shout out. So we really want to appreciate the staff, uh, for doing that. I had an opportunity, we were invited to the first annual Connecticut Workforce Summit, leveraging public-private partnerships, our chief workforce officer, the assistant's board and I know Dr. Valens is not here today. Uh, but I was pleased to introduce the session on career pathways, the student perspective panel. The panel facilitator, uh, is, uh, with our governor, and they were also five students representing higher education and K-12 education. We had three students from East Hartford and Hartford Public Schools sharing what is working for them around dual enrollment, similar to what you just heard. And it was really great to hear them. They kind of captivated the hearts of minds when students speak and they talk about their experience and what keeps them connected. And really honored for the five point five million dollar investment that we just made under the governor's leadership for expanding dual enrollment opportunities in school. And finally, nationally, I was, uh, pleased to join the Teachers of the Year, uh, including our own National Teacher of the Year finalist, Carolyn Talmage, in D C Core Day. Uh, they had the Washington League. And I was, uh, pleased to facilitate a roundtable of, uh, teacher, some of our state teacher leaders in a deep, deep reseession. The deep reseession, uh, earlier, we had a chance to listen in at the International Summit on the Teaching Profession. And the session was enhancing and elevating the teaching profession. This summit, uh, the question that the summit delegates were wrapped in was how can government, teacher organizations, schools, communities come together to elevate and strengthen the teaching profession to best attract, develop, and retain highly qualified and diverse teachers while at the same time be thinking and redesigning the profession? But consider that this summit convened representatives from across the world in a unique dialogue, four among education ministers, union leaders, and other teacher profession professionals. And of course, our U S delegation, uh, comprised, uh, for Secretary of Education and the American Federation of Teachers, uh, and, and N E A. Twenty-two countries included on the U S gathered for this global summit. And in answer to the questions, the kind of things that all these countries were talking about included the teacher shortage. Uh, they talked about ensuring and endangering respect for teachers. They talked about the need to improve working conditions, mental health support for teachers. And this is countries, Sweden, Australia, Finland, Italy, uh, China, New Zealand, the Netherlands, and more. So the issue we're wrapping with, my takeaway, really is a global one. Uh, and we're indeed working with all the right partners to make sure that we're having an impact. So it was really, uh, just really eye-opening to, to sit and listen, uh, to these global perspectives, which are very similar, when you think about it, to the conversations that we're having here in our own country and outside in our own state. Uh, so it was really, uh, really eye-opening to sit and listen, uh, to that conversation. And then to facilitate a discussion with our teachers of the year, uh, including our own Carolyn Talmage here, uh, in Connecticut. So, thank you very much for that. Is there no questions? Uh, we'll transition to our agency update, which is our teacher presentation is the right to read. Uh, this time around.
I just have one question. I think one of the, one of the amazing things that we're doing is we see these students that are coming forward with the desire to be in the teaching profession is, um, I would tell you that one of the things that we see when we do public engagement and outreach programs, uh, at a university level is while, while we're not, not always, um, trying to steal the teachers out of the classroom, I will tell you that they are usually sort of strongest, um, candidates that we have come forward to do education in an informal, out-of-school, after-school manner. So, um, you know, keep, keep working in that area because we love, we love how teachers are prepared, uh, you know, when we do public engagement. And, uh, so, don't forget that while we apologize that we'll pilfer from the classroom, uh, they're extremely well-prepared and, um, they do a great job out of the classroom as well.
No, perfect, and thank you for that. And we have a new initiative of looking at, uh, looking at our, um, after-school programs as also another space, uh, to make that connection. So we're willing to kind of broaden our thinking about where we can attract, uh, and, and we also, there's an initiative, uh, that we're working on to also to support our parent educators, to get more parent educators, uh, in this space as well. And then to use that as a pipeline to, to grow, uh, into the profession. So we're open to all kinds of thoughts and ideas as well. So we're taking it to go to make sure that we, and use those students as ambassadors for talking about, as you. So with that, uh, Dr. Melissa Hickey is here to update us on, uh, literacy a- across the state and specifically the legislation, uh, the right to read. Melissa?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So good morning, good morning to our chair, the board, Walton, um, vice chair Ben, Board Commissioner, and board members. Thank you all so much for your continued support around state three literacy and ensuring that it's halfway around all of our schools. Um, we know, um, do you do it in a slide copy? So what we know, we know from the various meetings in which we've been together that prior to the pandemic, only around fifty-four percent of our students in grade three were proficient on the E L A, um, assessment. After the pandemic, the proficiency rate declined to forty-seven percent. So thousands of grade three students, regardless of visibility, English language proficiency, or district, annually not achieve minimal proficiency in E L A. And this pattern has existed both prior to the pandemic and then made worse by the pandemic. We also know that learning to read is not natural to be monthly taught explicitly and systematically and apply research-based components. Scientists estimate that about ninety-five percent of our students are actually capable in reading. And schools and districts incorporating science of reading into eating and learning, they provide a central foundation for all students. Because we know that students who are not reading by the end of first grade are at significant risk for continued reading difficulties throughout school and beyond. Students not reading at the end of sixth, I'm sorry, third grade continue to struggle. And this is evident on their grade, smarter about sports. We know the impact that low literacy goes across. It's seen at many levels, including absenteeism, school retention, special education, dropout, unemployment, and of course, crime. The right to read legislation charged the State Department of Education with establishing a center. And our commissioners did that immediately. They put together the center. In twenty twenty-one, this legislation created by regulators, uh, often called the Right to Read Act. It aligns with the science of reading and supporting what needs to happen in teaching early literacy, what we know works and what we know helps students learn to read. This legislation assists districts in changing, adding, and increasing their current literacy practices so that you can be R I, so that every student is reading at or above grade level by grade three. So as the director of this center, I am working with a legislative body called the Council on Reading Implementation, the Reading Leadership Implementation Council. And together we practice this vision for the center. And the role is to support entities, local and regional boards of education, in establishing roads to human progress, means through which every student can realize his or her whole literacy potential and work together to achieve the vision that every child is reading at or above grade level by grade three. Now, how do you do this? The center is going to be doing this by reading through the change. We all know that leading change is very difficult, and it is not easy. But the Council, the Center, the State Department of Education, and all of you, I am, are committed to leading this change and bridging the gaps to support Connecticut educators, families, policy leaders, community members, and increasing the effectiveness of literacy teaching and learning. Here is the Right to Read update regarding legislation. As we all know, the Council is charged, what is working with the reading, with the, um, Reading Implementation Council, to review and approve reading programs and curriculum models. The legislation is made by, and, um, actually seven were identified. Districts do present power points, so I'm going to keep updating the legislature with the legislation.
Uh, you can continue to present. They got a second question.
Oh, I thought you called me over. Sorry, thanks, Mark. Okay. It's, uh, thirty AM. Um, age groups programs. They're also allowed to ask for a waiver. They can submit a waiver. We have received eighty-six waivers asking, um, that they not choose and implement one of the age groups programs. Part of their application includes, and this is by legislation, they would have to share their data, um, explain how their choice of reading curriculum law their data, explain how their choice of reading curriculum model or program aligns to what is that truth being necessary, which aligns with the science. And then also a strategy. So how will they be addressing those students who they are finding are not leading grade level? We did create a waiver process with input from C.A.P. and as well from the superinarians, so that they had a lot of input into this process, and we assured them that we would be very transparent about the process. We are currently, there weren't none of it. They are, we are currently in the process of contracting with T.D.G. T.D.G. is the one who also provides us with REITUN, which is an effective initiative to train teachers across Connecticut in science reading. And one of the people there actually has experience in Colorado with a very similar waiver process. So as soon as we have them on board, we'll be sharing their credentials, their names, et cetera, and moving forward with reviewing the application. This is a little furthest, but okay. Thank you. All right, so nothing else that we've done. So like we said, we have the legislation Right to Read, which is really moving the state in a certain direction, embracing the science of reading. And how are we supporting them? We are supporting them also by the creation of a literacy strategy. This is something that we developed with the council that I referenced. And have to do the work that is actually ongoing. Thank you all so much. They're going on a minute per year. Because this board and this department have been committed to early literacy for a very long time. There's a history of very important reading initiatives that inform this strategy. Some of it is included in Blueprints for reading achievement, that's what I refer to as Blueprints. The Connecticut Training Work for the Response to Intervention, our partnership with UConn, Bill and How, for the literacy initiative, the research-based reading assessment, which you approved. And REITUN, like I talked about, also the math class, which I'll be talking about a little bit more. All these important elements were woven into this literacy strategy. This is online, talks about what, according to research, we need to do in a district, to really be creating these systems and structures so that students are learning to read. And it's, it's there, the big element. Now, support. Once again, this is a list, change is not always easy. So we do have many opportunities for professional learning for districts. Here you'll see that we continue our literacy strategy, working in our aligned districts, opportunity districts, REITUN, going to be starting up again in May. This used to be both in-person and virtual, however, with COVID, we switched over to virtual. Seems to be working very well. So looking for the school team, starting in the fall. We have a wonderful opportunity with West End, they came and approached us and asked if we would like to participate. So of course, we said yes, absolutely, free to us, free to districts. We have five small school, five districts with one pool, one A2, A3 school, who have taken advantage of this opportunity, who are being led through recruitment cycles, all about literacy, and then science and reading magic class. We are completing two cohorts this year. It's been very exciting to see these teams of administrators learning about science reading and what structures are in place. This is a partnership with C.A.P. It was the brainchild of our commissioner, working closely with Fran Gerlinger at C.A.P. And it's been a huge success among the cohort members. So far, we had 22 district-based teams who have participated, and we're in the process of engaging two more cohorts, cohorts for another 24 districts. Is there anything that you want to add? Okay. All right. So another way in which we are supporting this, right, is not only through professional learning, but also through funding. So the Black People Reading Caucus and legislators were very kind and allocated over $20 million to support this legislation. So what we're doing is we're turning over and ensuring we give funds to the districts in grants, grants in which they'll be using their funds to purchase or actually to be paid back for, purchasing materials that align with the science of reading. So this could be assessments, the assessment is to be approved, the curriculum models and programs, but they will all have to establish a district literacy team and participate in professional learning. So by the end of the grant period, coming out with a very concrete literacy plan, a early literacy plan with structures in place. So that is my update. And I thank you all again so much.
What do you think, board?
Thank you. According to the directors and administrators, are there any questions for Dr. Hickey?
I have a question.
Yes.
I've been trying to understand this teaching of reading issue. And as I understand it, folks have been using ineffective methods to teach reading. And so now there seems to be, well, is there a consensus on a better way to teach reading? Like I've heard that phonics is the way to go. So in Connecticut, are we, are we implementing a new effect of where to teach reading?
So before I let the commissioner in, I just will remind you that at a previous meeting, the team did bring to us their collection of seven, I believe, approaches. I won't call them approaches, but that's not the right word. Approaches to teaching that are the established one. And that was rooted in the team's research in what is truly effective. And so districts now can collect from one of those seven approaches to teaching reading that are based on the science of reading.
And I'll, so thank you for that. And I'll go back to, I know we're, Mr. Exley, we may talk to you soon, Melissa, at some point in time, but maybe for the record, it truly is, you know, high level to just talk about where we are and where we're going in Connecticut and hence really the understanding of the legislation and the work that we're doing on the science of reading. High level.
Absolutely. So, Professor Exley, exactly right. This is not only a Connecticut focus, but also across the nation. We are not the only state to have legislation in place that is mirroring the districts to do materials that are aligned to the research and the science. And while we were looking at the programs and curriculum models that came forward from districts in Connecticut, we made sure that we were triangulating, looking across the state, to see what other programs and models were coming up in their review as being aligned to the science. As someone who was a second-grade teacher, a whole school teacher, I know that we do what we were training. I know that we do what is right for kids, you know, we never want to harm the students. There are times I'll be questioning, you know, is what we have in the classroom truly needed to lead the ball to them? And this is the time, this is the time the legislation has districts looking at what they're currently doing, looking at student results, and saying, is what we're doing showing the results here? Because if not, we need to make change.
And then just last, and I clarify, Melissa, and it's one of the slides about the waiver, because folks think that the waiver means I can either do what I'm required to or do nothing. That's not what the waiver is. So I just want to clarify that, that the waiver is about, I'm not going to follow, do one of these programs because what I'm doing is comparable to one of these programs. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Exactly.
I have a question based on the waiver as well. You had said there were maybe six districts that have applied for the waiver, and then you talked a little bit about extension. If a district where it's not, did not come out of the waiver process favorably, would that put them into the extension or they have to apply for the extension?
So those districts who are not granted waivers may then ask for an extension. So far, we have 12 districts who asked for extensions, who have written letters asking for the extension. At the end of the year of extension, it is the intent that they will then be utilizing one of the approved curriculum models or programs.
So if these districts are quite, how many were granted?
We've not had some started yet. We're waiting, we're in the contracting process to new national reading initiatives.
And I assume that most of the objections from the districts, other than they feel what they're doing is sufficient, is budgetary? Is budgetary, is that the feeling you're getting, that they can afford to move over or change to another program of reading?
I would think, you know, I don't speak for them, what I have heard, and that's the usual, is that they would prefer to continue doing what they're currently doing. And money is always on the forefront. What, I know that districts are very excited about this grant, and it will be assisting. It's also having districts look at other funding sources that are available and seeing how they can raise the funding, the funding sources, and to say, the title fund that come in, the realignment fund that come in, how can we be using the need fund to therefore support, you have the art scene in front of students, those materials that are state and science reading, of which phonics is one of them.
That was my last question about the funding, the art, the art grants in particular. Back at that time, open yet for districts to apply for?
Well, actually, it's open, it's not completely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it did open on Friday. There are some documents that we still want to be putting in there, help and guide. Some districts have already started to fill out their applications.
Okay.
Yeah, but we haven't even gotten that in yet, and not all the papers have been filed in there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then I think I want to add though, is that we do have legislation proposed.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Did you want to?
Yeah, I know you were experienced.
Okay, so one of the slides I kind of shot long here, there is legislation that's proposed. The commissioner was reading hearing from the district, myself included, and of course, our chief, that's the supervisor, my supervisor, I agree, and so wonderful, in support of everything. These are the areas from the district, and we need more time. So it's not only the funding, but it's also the time. We could have more time, then we can really be looking at what is out there available to us, these seven. We could be highlighting, we could be rolling out their level of grade, and we could be supporting professional learning. So there is currently legislation that was proposed and will be unnoted on, and which extends it for two years. So that does move forward, the extension really wanted to be necessary, because they gave them more time. And then every year, they have two more years to actually implement, provide professional learning, et cetera. And that's part of what we grant on support as well, because we know that if you need to change one area, you do need to be supported in others. So just by making new materials, placing them in front of the students, if you don't have teachers who know how to utilize those materials, or administrators who understand what needs to be done for the teachers, it's not going to make a change.
Mr. Allen?
On that general motion, where are the ed schools in this? Are they supporting if they adjusted their curricula so that the new teachers will be prepared for this?
So excellent question, hopefully. Part of the legislation is actually to be working with the higher education institution. So we already reached in that work, and then across the departments with Dr. Schwann Butter. We had two meetings now with the various staff at higher education and talking about what could be done, what are we doing, just like in the district. What do we need to refresh, what do we need to bolster, they're aware of, develop programs, they're aware of strategies that we develop. So yes, you know, working together.
So I'm curious, because my impression over the years has been that often there are schools of thought, if you will, ideological within the education profession, like any other profession. And are the academic institutions, are they going along because they have no choice because we're the State Department of Education? Or are they actively in support of this changed approach?
I am not personally receiving any way back from anybody. If anything, I have heard things like, you know, thank you, appreciate this, this supports what our feelings are and were. Because there is a disconnect when you have a teacher who prepares a program, goes out to field, and then sees something very different. So it's really painful. So now with the higher education institutions, really aligning a program to that science of reading, we can have districts who are joining, saying, we're going to have a proper teacher going in there.
I just mean, teacher practice, we're going to teach under council, but if I remember wrong, would it have been under council?
Sure, so that's going to be legislated by each one, appointed by various senators, legislators, UConn.
But I can't think about like, who's represented? Like what, what kinds of entities are represented on the council?
Oh, sure, so we have educators, we have politicians, we have UConn there.
So you have higher, it's in the space.
Pardon?
Higher education.
Oh, higher education, rather than.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you all.
And only for the few more slides, the critics, who'd like to do that shout out at the end, if you move forward. We had a chance, Mr. Exley, Aaron Bennet, you see the picture, their visit to the Stanley Elementary School. That was a great visit. Actually, they were, they wanted, Dr. Hickey was there, because they wanted, really invited us to show off a literacy program that they have, and it was really great to see and talking to students, was also a great to see the experiences that they were having. So that was a great visit. I know for our vice chair, this is kind of her second visit to the school, this was my first visit there. Next picture was the career pathways session at the Office of Workforce Strategy Summit. That's just a picture of the full content stage, the governor was very much in the midst and engaged in conversation with her students. The next picture, shout out, is, so there is our National Teacher of the Year finalist, the Connecticut Teacher of the Year, Karen McKellman, who you will be seeing, I'm sure, at some of our board meetings. That was at the International Summit on the Teaching Profession, and we had a chance to connect. And it's so interesting that the, there were four National Teacher of the Year finalists, and the nationals, the finalists from Washington, D.C., also from Connecticut and graduated from high school in Waterbury. So anyway, just saying, we're going to be great things here. Next picture, and I know Ingrid Kennedy's in the room, was a certain ribbon cutting, and you'll see, it was great to be there with our vice chair and George Holm, who I haven't seen for a while. And it was just great to, if you ever get a chance to see that great new facility in Waterbury, and they have space to do workshops and all of that too. So that's great, it was great to join Ingrid there. And a shout out to one of our own in the next picture, Dr. Megan Elvicki-Flick, a consultant in our academic office, that did a TED Talk on the importance of multiculturalism. And I don't think we sent that out to the board. If not, we should, it was really great to share that with you, if you've not done that. Great TED Talk. She gave me all the background and the help she got into that, but it's awesome. And the final picture, no, it's not the final, but it is a probably meat and grease, as I said before, with a lot of food and fun. And you can see from the pictures, we've got a lot to eat, and we had a great time. We connected, we've not done that, I think it was the first kind of getting together since COVID induced manner, so that was great. And finally, just a reminder, a teacher appreciation week, May 8th to 12th. If you have a chance, find a teacher, say thank you to a teacher, it's just awesome. So thank you very much, Chair, on that, just my input.
Thank you so much. All right, you've heard the recording, the commissioner. Wonderful summary of a lot of good work that aligns with our roles for all our students. This is my own, we're at the 7A, with our important work around racial imbalance. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the racial imbalance report. Is there a motion?
Tell them.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you, and we can hardly wait to get in. Mr. McKeon and Pat Goddard. Mr. McKeon and Pat Sackville?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So the racial imbalance number has come out again this year. There are currently five schools in both school districts that have schools that are racially balanced. Reminding racial imbalance is measured by the overall population of the district to the population of students of color. And that is compared to the overall population in the school, the population of students of color in that particular school. Any school that varies from the district average or under 25% is considered to be racially balanced. Currently, New Lebanon School and Hamilton Avenue School in Greenwich are both racially balanced, as is the Kinley School in Fairfield, Church Street School in Hampton, and Charter Over Academy once again is racially balanced. There is one update that I wanted to give you on Hampton. We did have, we were expecting to get an amendment from the Hampton Board yesterday, but there was miscommunication regarding the due date. And so what we will do is we're going to have Hampton present to this board at September meeting, is propose amendments to the plan for the fourth consideration. And we did not have them come to the LPTC meeting today because they really did not have an amendment update to be meaningful for the committee. We invited West Hartford and Greenwich to come update the LPTC and on their efforts, and we see what happens with that.
Thank you for that presentation. For members, you have in front of you the report of what is now a continued racial imbalance in two schools in Greenwich, one school in Fairfield, Hampton, and West Hartford. Just note that all of these have been in racial imbalance for quite some time, and over the past few years have been a focus of the Strategic Legislation and Policy Development Committee, who has been meeting with and discussing plans and raising the urgency of getting into balance with each of these districts. So you have the current status in front of you, and the chair will entertain any discussion on that. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the report? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Report is accepted, with my continued note of concern that progress is not in the, I see no financial matters for discussion today, so we have nothing for item E. And I'm going to, I intend on our agenda, I know our chair, Adam Xander, is not here. Is there any update from that committee? Seeing none, I will turn to a panel of the board vice chair then.
Yes, we saw in the change in consent agenda all the schools that we met with last month, and we have an upcoming meeting on May 17th to meet with some more schools. You know, some of board members had some questions, so please, just maybe think that do know that any committee meeting that you can certainly come, if you want to hear the whole presentation of the Christian Network School. And so that meeting will take place on May 17th. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, is there any report for financial audit?
Yes, there is. I've been in this building so often, it's not clear. You didn't feel like an employee?
We can get your death.
Nora Chapman, Keith Norton, and I conducted interviews on April 27th, May 1st, May 2nd, for the position of the Director of Internal Audit. And we interviewed seven candidates, and we have narrowed that down to two candidates that are going to be called back for a second interview. And Bonnie Buer will be representing our committee at those second interviews. And hopefully, we should be prepared to bring somebody forward at our June meeting.
Very exciting for you as committee chair and committee member, but I'm sure very exciting for Ms. Nora as well.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you for that update. Not able to be present today, but we did have a Legislation and Policy Development Committee meeting. We, as mentioned, had planned a year from Hampton, but we've put that off for a future meeting, and additional items that we have moved to another future meeting. But we did have an opportunity to review the work of the council that's been working on rethinking educator evaluation and support. And thank you to Dr. Tucker and Ms. Fuller, who presented for today. And special thanks to Vice Chair Ben, who's been serving on that, on that council. This group was a regeneration of work that was done dating back to the 2012 council. The council was brought back and reconvened under Commissioner Cardona, responded to need for flexibility during the pandemic, and has now extended that work into really reconditioning educator evaluation. They presented to us the sort of designing parameters that the council has been working under to modernize the approach to evaluation, which really included ensuring that there was differentiation of roles in the evaluation process, that, I don't know how my glasses are on, that the prizes were simplified and the administrative burden was reduced in the, in the new process. But the new process of evaluating our educators really focuses on the things that matter, that it is rooted in a belief in continuous improvement and cycles, and makes meaningful connections to professional learning and incorporates social emotional and other relevant factors, the best practices, and of course, the whole child. The council has been doing a lot of work, and is also doing that work in the shadow of knowing that the legislature is considering some actions that may impact that work. So given the timing, that districts really need to know where this is headed, but the fact that we are not yet, we are not active at the board, they are going to be posting to the website some updates, but districts will know sort of where this current meeting is, but posting that in a way that makes it very clear that it is draft, and that that draft is subject to board action, and that that draft is subject to knowing what happens with the legislature. Our hope is that, especially when, well, we got a session with him, and that some action will, some action will be taken. And then our goal is that at the June Legislation and Policy Development Committee, we will be able to have a complete proposal in front of us for action, and then we would get that then to the full board for action in June. Again, we are working under a timeline that's trying to be responsive to the fact that districts need to plan, and that is at the very end of the school year. But that is the word for the Legislation and Policy Development Committee, and we will meet again next month during the advanced part of our meeting, and that's the portion. Okay. See you then.
Well, the CEC, the leadership as well as the board has been very busy this past month with outreach. We met with people at Pratt &amp; Whitney last Monday to look at possibilities in terms of an undergrad aviation project, you know, they've got a graduate program at the Corsey and Brainerd. They're looking at something at Sinal in a partnership with Pratt &amp; Whitney. That's pretty good. And then yesterday, I'm sure we'll be off with Senator Hawke Dell, we met with people from Little Sex Hospital to talk about some way we can partner with them, also at Sinal because of proximity, to try to create pathways for our kids into EMT programs, CNA programs, and, you know, eventually registered nursing programs or a community to go on in college. So it's been busy in that regard. Our carpenter, our freshman carpenter at Sinal Tech created a replica of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And I encourage you to go on our website and see it because it is phenomenal. And so they incorporated math, science, social studies, as well as the hands-on trade to study the actual tomb, to figure out how to bring it on scale, the etching, all of it. And so it's going to be on floats in a memorial they created, and that's probably housed at the, some of that's in the organization, you're in Middletown, so you want to check that out if you get a chance. We've begun our search for a new superintendent, actually, right, two years, but that's an urgency that we all feel. Our committee's focusing on Monday and Tuesday of next week, and our full board will be together on the 17th of next.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I feel like hearing that whole theme here today, meaning of how we're growing our own pipeline, whether it was educators, our future STEM leaders, engineers, future healthcare, future carpenters, so thank you for that. Is there anything for them?
Well, I was the quietest one at NASTI, but we had a Government Affairs Committee meeting yesterday, and I found interesting that Congress may be updating National Apprenticeship Act. And at least, I think of apprenticeships as in connection with trades, but at least one state, Maine, is looking at including future candidates in apprenticeship programs. And so this may be an opportunity to get federal funds for our teacher preparation programs, such as alternative for the teacher residency programs.
So I think, and we choose to. I'm going to say, I'm going to say, it's a kind of a new, I'm sorry. I like that too.
We're going to have some labor on this issue, so we will update you very, very shortly. Very good.
Thank you. And, sir? You have your written report in front of you, and the commissioner, I know, was a great visiting attending, and I encourage any of you to stop in, especially Mr. Harris. I'm sure you probably visited when they were in Middletown, just to see the transformation. It's just unbelievable, unbelievable. It's a beautiful facility, so that was, that took place last week. And then on Friday, I hope to see some of the regular annual conference that will be taking place here right next door in Hartford. And the, the written report involves the great PD that they've been in and continue to. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I feel like I should, I don't know, do like a dance routine or, I mean, to let you out at 11:09. It doesn't, it doesn't seem right, given I've tracked back to the meeting. If I could tell you some stories? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Were members here, are you there 11:10 AM? I don't even know if we have lunch ready yet.
Okay, yes, it's lunch, and all board members, your presence is mandatory today. And we are going to be in Carrying Room J, not B. And please, if really you're able to, please attend, because we're already down a number of board members here. So we just have to say goodbye to Prada and then have that compassion. But I do ask you, we're checking on it, usually our delivery is between 11:15 and 11:45, and usually that's not a problem. So we're working on it.